Thank God, that's at least.
That was a little more realistic. Yes, that was a good thing. Cause that would probably come through first.
Hello.
Good. I'm gonna turn it up hot now. Hopefully all that cold air will go by you guys. No, I don't mean you guys meant Melissa. Yeah. I think I get all the cold air in there. I see. You don't? Oh, yeah. No, I know. It's a lot.
Yep, I did. Very good. Oh, getting your.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta jack it out.
We'll see how it goes tomorrow when the temperature goes up.
So did everybody get their mail? Cause I had that memo from Joe. Did you get, everybody get their mail? Jen first. I got some space here.
Oh, that's right. He's not gonna be here.
Something.
Fred, Diane, Jennifer, Ryan. Ryan, you guys ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Nikki, you ready? Right at seven o'clock. Good evening. Like to welcome everybody to the committee of the whole meeting in the Village of Walton Hills. Tuesday, June tenth, twenty twenty-five at seven P M. Second order of business, pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilman Nielsen?
Here.
Councilwoman Cantor?
Here.
Councilwoman Allen?
Here.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Here.
Councilman Whedon?
Present.
Like to welcome all the people, also the residents, non-residents, watching our live stream. We are also taking it in dispatch in case we have any trouble with that. Item four, any comments related to the agenda items? And of course, we can, we can make comments as, as we go through the items too. Okay, we have item five, finance discussion. I know Nikki and, uh... Well, I did wanna say all the council is present along with our fiscal officer and our fiscal clerk. Tonight, Mr. Montello is out of town. Item five is finance discussion. Nikki and Melissa distributed, uh, the May finance update. So Nikki, if you wanna kinda go through it or at least answer any questions council has, discuss anything council wants to discuss tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I did hand out the financial statements with a little bit of a summary on the front. Um, so I'd like to just, um, let everyone know that collections for the year for Rita were up about eight point nine, eight point oh nine percent. We received ten thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars in investment income. And we did have two unusual receipts, one from Rita. It was a, a refund of ninety-two thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars. And we also received a distribution from the state of Ohio for municipal electric light tax in the amount of a hundred and three thousand nine hundred and one dollars and ninety-eight cents. An additional amount received, uh, Rob had filed for some funds for the tornado relief. Uh, we received from the Department of Public Safety twenty-two thousand eight hundred and five dollars and eighty-one cents. The year-to-date revenue exceeded expenditures by seven hundred and six thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-one cents. And May revenues exceeded expenditures by three hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-three cents. And with that, I would like to open up to any questions.
That's not a bad, uh, statement for me, is it?
It's good news.
Yeah, we are really happy about that. We're starting to see some, uh, payroll tax from some of the newer businesses in the village, and we're very happy about that. Too, Melissa and, uh, Nikki have, uh, in the, see that collection.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I asked Nicole about this one, one, uh, payment. Do all of these payments go into the general fund or are any of them allocated to a specific, specific fund?
They all go into the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
That's nice to hear, too.
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
Nikki, and Melissa, did you see anything different, uh, jump out versus April or, uh, besides those three items we talked about on the cover page?
I don't believe we had any additional unusual expenditures.
I have one more question, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as far as the Rita collections go, there, uh, you did mention a, a decrease for May or May Rita collections decreased. Was there any identifying factor why that decreased or is it just a matter of how things are being paid?
Rita did send us a letter and I believe last month we talked about it. I don't have it with me, but they did say collections were slower for the month of May.
Okay. All right, thank you.
They said it was too early to determine if that was going to be a trend or if it was just.
Okay, thank you.
Nicole? Does the, the refund that we got of the ninety-two, will that be shown like on June or that doesn't get included on here?
That is on the May. And let me see if I can find it for you. I believe it's under the other. That would be... I believe it's the other miscellaneous operating year-to-date, a hundred and one thousand.
What page are you on, Nikki? That one, everybody, and the number?
Page two.
And what number?
Uh, line item number one thousand eight ninety-one.
Okay, it's in the one hundred and one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nicole?
Yeah.
Would you be able to find out for me what's the motor vehicle license tax fund that we have, number twenty-one oh one? What is that for specifically to be spent out of there?
I can find out. I believe it's for street improvements. However, I don't know the exact descriptions on everything, but I can get that.
Okay, thank you.
I have one other question. By it being seven hundred and six thousand, uh, the revenue exceeding, does that mean the three hundred thousand that we need for the roads coming up real soon for that company,
Special?
specialized construction, are they, is that gonna come out of that then?
It will come out of the general fund. It, it just depends on how our, any other revenue comes in in the next couple months, how it will affect the general fund. It's not a specific line item that it comes out of revenue. All of the general fund revenue is sort of lumped together and the expenses.
So at least that bill will be able to be paid for.
Yes.
Cause that is our next biggest one, isn't it?
Right, and we have it on our budget amendment on here, so yes.
Okay, thank you.
Nikki, maybe while everybody's looking over the, uh, the finance update, did you just wanna touch base on, uh, what we talked about earlier? Maybe having on the next meeting for legislation, those appropriations, just to touch base.
Sure, I did have a couple other things. We have a current budget amendment for the road projects of three hundred and six on this legislation. I am probably going to have to change that to include the payment for Lexipol of seventy-five hundred dollars. In addition, the chief received a grant for body armor and that was in the amount of ten thousand fifty-five dollars and forty cents. So we'll be amending the budget for that, but we will also, for that grant, be getting back seven thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars. So those two amendments will be on the next, on the final budget amendment that we do next week.
And even though Lexipol was a two-year agreement, of course, we're just funding the one grant.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I also wanted to give a quick update on our bank reconciliation. We're still going through the reconciling items. So we're still working on that, which we're hoping that audit can get in here in July or August. When I spoke with the auditors, they were a little backed up as well, so we're still working on that and I just wanted to keep everybody updated on that. And as far as the Rita program for the nonfilers, the next step they will be making is to be sending out letters. The program will run from July through February, so we won't have any information on that probably until next year. So they should be sending out the letters this month, I believe.
Maybe phones don't matter anymore, but I'm like, I just, I heard something. I got my phone up here, so I put it.
I think that was it. Was there another?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Those are the only ones I remember that you wanted to add. We also seen something that, uh, not only from the businesses, the business, uh, on the corner of Norfield and Alexander, but some of the redevelopment in, um, the Creek Road area. We've started seeing some more payroll tax.
Excellent.
I think you mentioned that to me the other day. Any other questions? Do you wanna, uh, go through, you know, still look at it or do you, we can always come back to it, you know, in between things if you think of something or you see something.
It, it is nice to see that we are on the positive side for the year so far, even though we had passed it initially as a negative three hundred and eighty. We are positive a hundred and eighty.
Mr. Mayor?
So.
If collections keep up, we'll do well by the end of the year, hopefully.
Thank you, Nicole.
That was it, just the collections. Hopefully they'll, they'll remain and then upwards. Oh, and the colors on page two make it easier to read. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, is everybody good?
Good.
If you wanna move on to the legislation. Okay. Item six, the legislation. We have item A, which is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, a resolution adopting the tax budget for the Village of Walton Hills, Ohio for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-six, directing that same be submitted to the fiscal officer of County and declare an emergency. This is something we do every year. You have anything to add to that, Nikki, or if anybody has any questions related to that? I know we discussed it quite a bit last week, um, and also had Matt Stilinski here, our financial advisor to, uh, who's gone through some of this stuff personally with Nikki and Melissa. And that piece of legislation that we talked about last week is on here today. So if everybody's okay with that, that will be on the, uh, council meeting next week for suspension. Any questions from anybody watching? Any questions from anybody that's here? Okay. Is everybody okay to move on to item B? Okay. Item B, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two, a resolution accepting amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and declare an emergency. It's another yearly item we must do. We need to talk about that in last week's meeting also. Everybody's okay with that? It will be on the council meeting for suspension. We do have item C, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three, a resolution requesting county auditor to advance taxes from the proceeds of tax levies for the year twenty twenty-five, collected in twenty twenty-six pursuant to section number three twenty-one point three four of Ohio Re-Deice Code of the State of Ohio declaring an emergency. To discuss that. Any questions on that? Okay, I will also have, we will also have that, uh, council meeting for suspension. Item D, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the fiscal officer of the Village of Walton Hills to enter into a contract with Specialized Construction Incorporated for the twenty twenty-five asphalt maintenance program and declare an emergency. Discuss that. We had a memo from Joe, Gilati from, uh, Sugar and Valley Engineering, our village engineer. After the bid opening, he suggested we move forward with that. Any questions on that at this time? And that will be on the council meeting for suspension also. Okay, then we have item E, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five, a resolution authorizing mayor to apply to the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District for potential grant for the funding of capital infrastructure improvement projects in the Village of Walton Hills and declare an emergency. Know we had discussion on that and, um, Councilman Whedon, uh, along with other council members asked that, um, what phase three entitled, you know, uh, what is phase three? And we did receive, uh, a memo, uh, from Mr. Gilati. He kinda outlined the last three years, uh, but I'll just read what this is for, which is, um, for twenty twenty-six. We will be applying to NEORSD for dollars to perform this work along Alexander Road, Walton and Norfield, and along Jefferson, McCullin, and Morningside Drives. And then there's a map along the back. I hope that answered it.
Yes, it does.
Okay, good.
Mayor Collogra?
Yes.
If I may comment, uh, I thank Mr. Gilati for sending this. It's good to see that, you know, we're applying for this. As we are applying for this grant, uh, it's not just, you know, for inspection of primary roads, but we also see it contains some residential roads. We know that, you know, over the years, there, there could be problems in some of our, uh, residential areas. So it's good to see that it, this work is encompassing main roads, industrial area, as well as some of our residential roads.
Okay, so that resolution will also be on the council meeting for next Tuesday and also ask for suspension at that time. Okay. And we have item F, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six, a resolution authorizing the fiscal officer to make declarations of official intent pursuant and to, and in accordance with Treasury Regulations, Section one point one five oh, and approving related matters and declaring an emergency. If I'm not mistaken, that's the new one, correct?
Correct.
That's the one, uh, Matt had prepared for us for this meeting.
Mayor Collogra?
Yes.
Just a minor piece, as I was reading through this resolution, uh, I had questions, um, well, a question regarding, the references to the Treasury, but then the exhibit A answered the question because it specifically, uh, spells out U S Treasury regulations. And I was just wanna, uh, uh, ask if it would be too much to have the U S insert it on the resolution in front of any, in each line where it says Treasury regulations, just to make it perfectly clear that it's U S Treasury regulations. Exhibit A makes it real clear.
Yes, it is. It's close to state.
Yeah, yeah, versus state, cause I was, I was, I wasn't sure if that was state.
Make sure it's federal.
Correct, that's all.
I, that's something we can, uh...
It's about four or five places in there.
We can probably make an amendment to it then.
Okay.
But we'll, Nikki, you can talk to Matt and just make sure it's... I think, uh, Rick, Ren, Gray, and Catherine put it together, so that shouldn't be a problem. Matt did send an email saying we could, he, remember how he mentioned he thought maybe there was something that said sixty days? If you do it within sixty days of your next project. I just wanted to make that clear, but it seems like we were all okay with putting it in. And as you mentioned, uh, Councilman, we've put in the toolbox, so if everybody's comfortable with it, instead of waiting, I'd ask for a suspension. If everybody's okay with that?
Okay.
And if something changes, uh, Tuesday, that's fine too. We did talk about that quite a bit. Matt Stilinski, our financial advisor was here and Nikki and Melissa did talk about it quite a bit.
Mayor Collogra?
Yes.
I, I do have another question in regards to whether this is a resolution or a ordinance. I thought when, last week when we talked, it was ordinance.
Good question. We can, we'll, we'll make sure that, uh...
And then the, um, exhibit A references ordinance on the, on the last line.
Yeah, that might have been, uh, so we miss Mr. Montello. Cause he was, he did, and, and that was okay, cause we knew he could review it when it comes back, so.
It, it did say in my notes that he said an ordinance of a declaration of intent.
Not a problem. We can, we'll, we'll, we'll find him, Catherine. So we got those two.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sure it's U S federal and, uh, an ordinance and not a resolution. Do you have all that, Nikki?
I do.
Okay. Anything else on that or? We also have next week too, if you see something, we can always amend it, uh, at that time too. Wait, can I just put it out for first reading too? Okay, we have item G, Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seven, an ordinance authorizing directing the fiscal officer to certify delinquent property maintenance charges, trash collection assessment, and culvert repair assessment to the County Auditor, County Auditor for collection, declaring emergency. We discussed that last Tuesday. Any questions on that at this time? That would be for suspension too, if everybody's okay with that. Okay. We have item H, Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eight, an ordinance amending the ordinance asked for the twenty twenty-five budget, making additional appropriations for current expenditures of the Village of Walton Hills, Ohio during the year twenty twenty-five and declaring emergency. Nikki went through that with us. Any questions there? I did, I missed my little note here. Backing up to Resolution twenty twenty-five, we also put in your, everyone's mailbox, a memo from Joe about, um...
Yeah.
Grant, and, uh, he kinda outlines the whole thing, um, how, uh, CDVG changed the dates on it, so it wasn't the engineers or any, any of us. But he said, given these timing requirements, the public hearing should be conducted next week, June seventeenth, and we did post it. Nikki and Melissa posted it, got everything in there. And then it would be required to pass the legislation at a special council meeting to be held after June twenty-fourth and before July twelfth. This will allow the application to be submitted on July fifteenth. I asked them again, is there any way we could do it next Tuesday? And we can't. And, uh, all this is nothing to do with us. They pushed that, uh, and pushed it way, way up the deadlines and everybody's in the same position as us. So, um, it looks like we'll probably have a meeting, um, at that time. So we'll have to coordinate with everybody and, you know, see how they are. And if we have anything else, then we, we can put that on there too. So we will have the public hearing. We have two public hearings next, uh, Tuesday before our council meeting. Any questions on the legislation?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
The, uh, June twenty-fourth, that would be the fourth Tuesday, and I have an outstanding obligation at six-thirty on those Tuesdays. So I'm just putting it out there, if we could meet earlier, just like even at six o'clock on...
I'm working that day.
Okay.
I'm off the next day for the rest of the week.
Yeah.
The twenty-fifth, I could do the twenty-fifth too right now, but.
Why doesn't everybody take a look? Because I know out, like July, what is the? Everybody take a look and see. See how your schedule is looking, and then we'll see what we can coordinate.
Mayor Collograff, I took a look at the calendar, and of course, we all need to take a look at our personal calendars.
Right.
But in early July, there's a couple Tuesdays, first and the eighth. Again, depending on what others' schedule looks like, if we hold off until the eighth, that would give us that time to perhaps receive. I don't know if there's anything we need to do with the OPWC grant, the pending grant, is there anything that we need to do for that?
No, not that I'm aware of. The eighth I know I wouldn't be able to make.
Okay.
And I, I can just tell you, that's, that's the Tuesday after the fourth, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, it doesn't have to be a Tuesday though, correct?
No, it could be any day.
That's what I'm saying, we could, you know.
Yeah, I'm just saying if you look at Tuesdays, but it could be any day.
Yeah, if any day works for whatever, and it could be earlier. I mean, we can do it at five even, if that works better for everybody.
It would just be that one piece of legislation, so.
Unless something else came, yeah, something that we couldn't wait, you know what I mean? Let's, Brian, take a look at your calendar.
Yeah, I'll, I'll submit.
Everybody take a look at their calendar and. Kind, yeah, kind of give your days available, and then we'll take, maybe you could take a look and see what works for everybody. What would be, and then kind of put a time in too, if it's better for everybody at five, six, you know, whatever, whatever works. I just wanted to mention that I. And then I would ask for, like we do, for recess a motion. So that would be the other thing on, on the agenda, motion to recess for July and August. But we never just can get a clean July and August calendar. I, I, I think last year we had a couple extra meetings too.
July.
Yeah, I just, but.
It can be the new four o'clock, so you're still here.
Yeah, no, that's fine too. I mean, it's, it's.
That which isn't a comeback.
Yeah, doesn't, doesn't matter.
You know, and those are, you know, we're passing legislation to apply for, you know, for accepting grants and all that, so it's all, it's all good.
Mr. Mayor, you just need two-thirds on that?
Yeah, I'm sure for, for the passing of their emergency.
I mean, if something should happen.
We wouldn't have to wait. It would go into effect immediately than if we had a four. Or two-thirds, I should say. Okay. Okay, are we good with the legislation and ordinances then? So let me just kind of recap for. So Resolution twenty-two-five, we can't pass it, correct? So we would have it, what, for first reading? I guess, is that what Joe's saying there? But we'll find that out. I'll get that straight. So then we have that. And then. The other ones before that are suspension, if everybody's comfortable. Think about that. So Resolution F, we're going to correct, make, clarify the US. And also that it's an ordinance and not a resolution. And. That's it. Anything else, anything we need to add on it? Okay. Any other business at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I do see on his, Mr. Jake Leati's notice that the program requires seven days between the public hearing and passing the legislation.
Right, so that means we'll probably just, I would ask if we can just put up for first reading or whatever. Because we're not passing it.
But we can do the public reading next week.
Yeah, we will do the public reading.
Right.
And, two, two public readings. The other public reading, Nikki, is for, I have it here.
Tax budget.
The tax budget.
That can be, the tax budget in the public hearing can be made on the same day, correct?
Yes. Anybody have anything for any other business at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I did have the motor vehicle license tax information in my file. So basically, it says here that. The purpose of planning, constructing, improving, maintaining and repairing public roadways, highways and streets. For paying for the costs and expenses of enforcing and administering the tax provided for in this section. To provide additional revenue for the purpose set forth in ORC forty-five oh four dot oh six. The actual number that the motor vehicle license tax is in Ohio Revised Code is. I'm sorry, eight ninety-six oh six. If you wanted to look at it.
Thank you, Nikki.
Yeah, I would still speak with John before we spend any money from there and get his opinion.
Any other business this time? Otherwise, I'd ask for a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second motion by Mr. Weeden, Sam Allen, second. Vote on the motion.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kanzoni?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagel?
Yes.
Councilman Weeden?
Yes.
Okay, meeting adjourned at seven thirty-six PM. So we got a couple things to make that straight. Yeah, we didn't get that ordinance from Matt until late yesterday.